All right, we can call our Select Board meeting for September 4th, 2019 to order. We're gonna kick things off with the Tri-Board discussion, first thing today, instead of the consent agenda like we normally do. And since we do have a 6:30 appointment with Mr. Isenthal and we discussed the ban, upcoming ban with the town treasurer, I'll kind of let you guys take it. Thank you very much for coming, and good to see you. So, we have another ban we're signing here, and I think we probably have some questions for you in addition to this.
Oh, all right.
But we can kick things off at the ban, at least. It says here it's for 1.5 million, but I think it's for slightly less in actuality.
I think it was up there because we're renewing one that's coming due for close to 1.5. Oh, there are a couple of changes, yes. We have one that's coming due, but this is also the time where we do a lot of paydowns. So about 1.39 or something's coming due. We're paying about $500,000 off, and it leaves this 880.
Okay.
It was, the extra one and a half million, we were going to take out at this time for the library, and because things have been moving along a little slower, there's been some delays, we decided not to take out that much at this time, because we do have funds that would carry us several more months. We'll look at it and consider taking some more money in December or January, depending on whether we need it in, whether we want the borrowing to be in calendar year 2019 or 2020. Remember, we're trying to stay under that $10 million within a calendar year. So we'll take a look and see how things are then, if we need the money. But if we were to add that in now as we're originally planning, we'd just be spending the interest for another few months, and we're just trying to be as careful as we can, not have too much money out at a time.
Yeah, we can avoid some interest payments. Makes sense, so, yeah.
Yep, so it was, it is less at this time than we originally intended, so 877,845, and we're doing it for a full year. So this will go till next September, and then we'll see at that time, we've got some library money in here. We'll take out the larger capital items that would then, we would then roll over to for a short, and to take us till January of '21, we'll be getting out that second bond that will take care of the rest of these projects, which probably be about seven, seven and a half million dollars, to finish up our three building projects. But for now, these can easily stay in here a year, and we're glad we did it that way, because we got a good interest rate. So we went out to bid yesterday, and I'll let David explain.
Well, these were done as the town has typically done, as State House notes certified by the Massachusetts Bureau of Accounts, and I don't know, it's possible that the town has received more bids than this in the past, but I can't recall. The town received nine bids for this issue. The winning bid was Oppenheimer and Company, which is actually an investment bank. It's not the typical buy and hold institution. Actually, the other eight bidders are all banks that would have bought and held the notes. Oppenheimer, in contrast, is actually re-offering the notes to the public. So, but they won at a net interest cost of 1.747 percent, coupon rate of 175, and actually a small premium vote into the town treasury. And then the rates range from there to 235 among the nine bidders. And I think, the only thing I would add, I think Linda summarized this very nicely, I think we would watch the bank qualification, but I think even more importantly, the cash flow for the projects. I think you don't want to get too far ahead of the cash flow, because at this point, the town, the cost of money is higher than the return on invested money. So why borrow much more than you need for an extended period?
So how does that differ between the low bidder letting it go out to people's shares, and a bank holding it? So what's the difference with that?
Well, it just means that Oppenheimer offers its customers and other folks in the market the opportunity to buy small pieces of the note. And actually, that's true of the bonds that you executed back in July. Those are in $5,000, ultimately in $5,000 denominations as well. Under the same, in that way, this note issue ends up being the same as the bond issue. The note will be held by the Depository Trust Company, which is, used to be in New York, it's actually New Jersey now, but they will actually hold the note to the maturity of the note, and the, what they call the beneficial owners, the actual people who, you know, pay money to hold the note and then receive the principal and interest at the end, those folks will just get like an electronic statement, and they can invest as little as $5,000 principal for this, for your notes.
Okay. So we do have the forms to sign, and I will, there's the note, which requires at least three of you to sign, and you're all here tonight. We have a clerk certificate, and then we have--
Do you need a motion from us to accept the--
I don't think--
That's your pleasure. I mean, this is, the Department of Revenue does not require the board to take a vote, but--
I didn't know if you did or not. I think the last time we had to do a vote--
Yes, if you do, and this is a quirky feature of municipal borrowing with a Select Board. If you do something with a legal opinion, generally, Bond Council will require the board to take a vote that's in a posted meeting. The Department of Revenue, I believe, takes the position that the, if the notes are signed, then the board has acted within its authority to do what it needs to do.
Good enough.
Just for the viewing public, 1.75 percent is a lot less than 5 percent.
It is, it is.
Which is what we had projected a while back.
It's less than the over 2 percent that we were doing on our bans just a year ago, so-- Yes. Thanks. Thank you for changing the rating.
Yeah.
It helped.
It helped, it didn't hurt.
This is part of the outcome though, yeah?
Right.
That's great.
And this is, yeah, it is very nice that we could, yeah, on this. Good fortune. So I will start at one, and each of you is signing, I think, five times. Ready, John?
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to this.
It'll be a while, is there something else we can sign?
Yeah, I had a question for you, since you're here, is, there's been some discussion amongst the projects, and I'm gonna throw it a hypothetical, some might relate to this more true in nature than not, but say, some of our projects have extra money in the budget because their, that the cost came in less than expected, and so we have a certain amount we voted for at town meeting that we're allowed to spend on that project, and other projects might be, have a tighter budget, their budget might be, a certain amount was voted, and they're having trouble meeting that budget based on cost.
You can't have my fire substation.
And so, is, and this is basically a question kind of for the public, and so we know, but is there a way to move funds from one approved project to another approved project in order to cover costs on one project that are in excess in another? Or would that require going to town meeting, voting, and reallocating those funds, or coming up with new funds for a project that might be over budget?
Okay, so this is, at this point, a hypothetical--
This is hypothetical, let's say.
And it's especially, I want to make clear, it's hypothetical, because the town has not borrowed, has not used all of the authori, you know, the three major authorizations, the Fire Substation, Senior Center, and Library. All of those still have authorization to be used, they haven't used the authorization. So it is theoretical at this point, but let's assume that one of the projects, let's assume that all three of the projects end up using all of the local share borrowing authorization, but it ends up that one project is struggling to meet the budget, whereas the other might be ending the project with a few extra dollars left in the fund. It could be that, the general laws do provide for the transfer of unexpended bond proceeds from one, from similar projects of similar nature, basically, to put it as simply as possible. And in this case, I think you have three projects that are, at least, you have, they're all major building projects, and they are all debt excluded. So I think it would be, if, it would be, at the pleasure of town meeting, any excess funds borrowed that are not expended could be transferred to another similar capital purpose. But as I said before, it's theoretical, and I don't necessarily, I wouldn't necessarily advise the town to overborrow in one, for one project, just simply to cover a theoretical shortfall in another project. It might be cleaner, at least from a financial point of view, to ask for additional authorization, especially if the shortfall were related to unanticipated conditions, say. That would be, I think that, but that would be another way to approach it. But if the town did end up with unexpended proceeds in one project, I think that, then those could be transferred by town meeting to another capital project.
So in a way, it might be better to just ask for more money for one project, if it needed the money, instead of trying to shuffle things around a little bit?
Although, the complication there, and I do say, and I did, this is one reason I said unanticipated conditions, because these are all debt excluded projects, we would need, we'd need to make sure that the Department of Revenue would approve the exclusion of additional authorization from, from the Proposition Two and a Half Lenny Limit. So I think, and there's a procedure there in that case to follow, and I'm working with a community that's undertaking that right now. So something called the DE2 Form can be filed in that case, and actually, all of you would sign something like that if there was a case to be made, if there was more unanticipated conditions associated with the building project merited an increase. We'd still need town meeting to agree to increase the borrowing authorization, but I think you'd want to make sure the Department of Revenue would agree that the additional borrowing authorization would be excluded under the debt exclusions that were voted by the, by the voters--
And could we avoid a ballot vote? Could we avoid a ballot vote?
Well, that's how you would avoid a ballot vote, by going to the Department of Revenue and filing this DE2 Form.
So, under the current borrowing authorization, that town meeting and a ballot vote has granted us, there's not a way to just transfer easily between funds, really, even if they're like light projects, without having to go back to town meeting?
Well, the town hasn't borrowed, I mean, if the town had borrowed against all of the authorizations, and there was money sitting in the town treasury, then it would be possible if there was money left over at the end of the project, and the statutes are pretty clear about that. At the end of the project, there is a provision for town meeting to transfer excess bond proceeds from one capital purpose to another. It has to be something for which the town can borrow for an equal or longer period of time.
Similar to our end-of-year balance transfers, but we still need the town meeting vote to do it on a capital project, like a capital borrowing.
Right, because town meeting voted a particular amount of money for each project. The ballot votes didn't. So you'd have to, you're changing the money amount.
Right, but you still need to, I think that, I think that if it, if there was just--
Was that simple majority, or was that two-thirds?
Simple majority.
If the town voted, you know, wanted to change the nature of the Senior Center, say, wanted to add a wing that it hadn't contemplated earlier, town meeting voted, and I'm just giving a sort of a, an example--
Yeah, yeah.
--that wasn't related, and, you know, so wanted to add an additional wing to the building somehow, that might not, DOR might not consider that to be covered by the earlier voted debt exclusion. However, and this is not, and I know, site's right over here, in the other community I'm working with, they hit ledge, and that added hundreds of thousands of dollars to project cost in an unanticipated fashion, and that's the type of thing that we think probably DOR would say, "Yeah, you, you can include that," especially if it's not a large percentage of the project cost.
So one more theory--
Yeah.
--theoretical situation. If a project was to finish in advance of another project that was ongoing, and we had existing borrowing authorization for that project, could we then do that borrowing, and then do a funds transfer once that project's complete, anyway? Theoretically, is that, because I'm just trying to think of the easiest and best appearing way to--
It's hypothetical.
Who's short? Nobody, this is all theory.
Right. I'll say that it wouldn't necessarily be something that I would recommend, but if it ended up that this was how things worked out--
Right.
I mean, I'm not going to recommend that the town do something like that, but--
Thank you, Sean.
Any other questions? Thank you, David, for being very sharp on top of all our questions out of thin air that we might come up with, but thank you for your answers and your guidance.
Thank you.
Geez, I take a, don't come to a meeting, I miss quite a bit, don't I? I think I've missed three in 17 years, boy.
Yes, thank you both.
Where's that?
Yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna have our Tri-Board discussion. I just had a few things I wanted to talk to, well, Bi-Board discussion, I guess, right now, but a few things, just to touch base with you guys on, was, for fiscal year 2019, our free cash numbers. I don't think we have anything quite yet. I'm talking to David earlier today, he's kind of sticking with a $650,000 estimate, but--
Yeah, so I worked with the accountant today, Don, specifically, to see if we couldn't tighten up our free cash numbers, and we don't have anything quite ready for certification. But given the estimates that we have, the $650,000 amount that I used for the budget is a very safe amount at this time. That $650,000 gives you a $75,000 contribution to capital, so, so we're in relatively good shape.
Does that include the fire, or the ambulance rebate?
No.
Yeah, we're, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, so I remember we approved a specific schedule, was it to have a free cash number? So as long as everybody met their deadlines, the accountant, right? Do you remember, was that the middle of September? How close are we? Right, it's like around 15?
It's like a week away, or something like that, so--
So at our next meeting, we should have--
We should have what we've submitted to Department of Revenue certification, or the certification by Department of Revenue, one or the other.
And the revenue from the rebate, right, that is going to be tendered in this fiscal year?
That's right, there's 105-day look-back periods, so that takes us to the first week of October.
That'll go into the general fund, though, won't it?
It'll go to the general fund.
Are you putting that into free cash for general fund? Is that where it's going?
No, 'cause that's, that would be money that came in after, on July 1st.
Okay.
Okay. And then our fiscal year 2019, one thing I wanted us to be conscious of is capital spending, if capital projects were actually executed, or if they're still out there in the ether, if they've gotten started, not gotten started. I know, looking at the draft town meeting warrant, there were some articles in there of, you know, the police cruiser, the Council on Aging ban, those kind of things, where some money was going back into the budget, some transfers. So I don't know if there are other things out there that we can look at, that, you know, capital projects that haven't been started or, you know, what's going on with those projects?
What's the list?
There is a list there.
So if you look at Page 7, Article 4. So this is our cleanup article. This is where we take unused balances from uncompleted projects and return them to the pot from which they came, or to amend the borrowing in order to clean up the chart of accounts. There are some projects here that have shown no movement. So the Town Hall pillars for $35,000, the Public Safety Insulation at $9,500, the Library shelving is a residual amount.
I have a question about the pillars one. Why aren't you gonna do the pillars?
Good question. I have prepared the bid documents for this, I'm waiting for the specifications, and so this article will be shown to all the departments and say, "Okay, maybe the project, or we're taking the money back," or that's at least my recommendation.
I know that one, too, was in the Municipal Building Committee, so I don't know where that is exactly for, we can check with them.
Well, you applied with the CPA, and it was, and then it went through town meeting, and it was granted, and they put a two-year restriction on it, so--
I haven't read that.
There's still time before they're gonna be requesting it back.
Yeah, it might be something that they're--
I think it's just premature to ask for that back.
I think this is just to raise the flag--
Oh, just to get the departments moving.
And just get, just figure out where it's at, and then we can easily take it off of here, I think, if it, if we want to, but just to know, kind of get that visibility, 'cause these are out there.
Yeah, some of these things have been hanging around since 2014, so either complete the project or return the money, 'cause we have needs now that we're gonna have difficult time to fund it.
So just one question on that, about that, the 2014 article for North Abbeville Village Hall and Russell School, we were gonna ask for $10,000 for the architect, can that money be used to fund that architect that the Municipal Building Committee was looking for?
Yes, we could.
Because rather than return it back and then re-ask--
Yeah.
We would, we would have to double-check with CPA to find out if that's--
Out on that, my understanding is, 'cause I did pass for that money, 'cause I, the same, same question was going, 'cause we have an article here with $8,000 for Russell School, right, for the roof. So it was based on, what is the purpose? When they applied, it was granted through CPA on the application, what was the purpose? And so the most I got out of it so far, and I think Linda looked it up, maybe it was Linda looked it up for me, it was a plan, it was for a plan.
And that's what we were looking for, I think, for Russell School.
So it depends what the, we have to double-check what the purpose was for.
Yeah, okay.
But, and, and I don't think that they had the two-year limit back in 2014, I think that--
No, they didn't. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so this is something that CPA has specifically asked to have returned. It's worth our while to have a conversation with CPA to say, "Rather than return the money, let's fund the project which you did not fund for 10,000 or 15,000, whatever it was."
And perhaps that's why they didn't fund the project, we don't know.
Now, the plan, the CPA plan that you're talking about for the Russell School, that, it had enough, it was denied through the CPA, but the reason for that being was a couple reasons. One, nobody showed up to talk about it, there was questions, and the plan that, it was very confusing with what was submitted on the application. My understanding, just from listening to Tim, explain what the plan was for. The plan was supposed to be for, to find out what the purpose, you know, whether you could sell it, whether you will demolish it, whether you're going to partner up with someone. It was to come up with some ideas, that's what I thought, but that's not what it said in the application. The application was more, this is to come up with a plan more of, how much is it gonna cost, I think it said, to demolish it, or something like that. Now, it was confusing, and that's, so I think that the application wasn't clear on what you really were looking for, a plan. Now, nobody wanted to fund another plan to say, "How much is it gonna cost?" because we believed that it was already been done a couple times, and that's where they came up with the numbers, the 21, 22 million dollars it was gonna cost. And then the other thing was, it was talked about, well, you kind of have an idea of what it would cost to take it down possibly, just to not, you might have some roundabout estimate, because you're taking down Hooker School, you know, you know, well, how much does it come, taking down Hooker School? So, but if you're coming up with a plan to come up with, you know, could, can we sell it, how much would it be to sell it, so then, but they said, "No, this is not what it says on the application." So they denied the application based on the purpose of it.
They didn't mention it, nobody was there.
Yeah.
What's that?
They didn't mention that.
Yeah.
Nobody showed up.
Yeah, Municipal Building Committee, when, they said that they were surprised it was turned down, but they didn't mention in that conversation that there's nobody there to speak to us.
So we, so, yeah, no, nobody came, so we did all these questions, so we gave them what, whatever we could give at the time. There is another meeting set that they are doing, so if someone did want to go to it, or something like that, my suggestion is to do that, that's on the night.
Okay. The September 9th?
September 9th.
Is it Friday night, right? Thursday?
It's the same as Capitol.
Oh, okay. You can run after. Or what time does that one start?
6:30.
6:30, okay. Anything else on those capital spending articles, or remnants, I guess? Then I had our fiscal year 2020 budget, after the state approved the budget, or the state came up with a budget and it was approved, we have $77,000 more in our budget than we originally had, so just to account for that--
$77,000, I didn't--
$77,000, correct, yeah. With, I guess there was that more, much more state aid than what we were estimating.
And that, that information came in after annual town meeting, we passed a balanced budget at annual town meeting, the Senate passed their budget, it gave us a $50,000 boost, and the Conference Committee passed their budget, which added another $27,000, so we have a surplus that we can think about.
And then my last thing on my list here for the budget, speaking of that, is just the fiscal year 2020 budget additions and adjustments, you know, with a lot of what we've been talking about, of transition planning and those kind of things, right now, we probably want some extra money in Council on Aging, because, well, we're not gonna have a director for at least a few weeks, and then, once we hire that new person, we're gonna probably wanna bring Suzanne back as a consultant, just for finite period of time, to kind of help train the new person a little bit.
Inspections.
We're also gonna have that in inspections, and there could be other departments that we don't know of yet, where we have that issue coming forth. So just having some money allocated for that kind of purpose would be nice, I think. And I don't know if you guys have any ideas about--
Now, transitions, on some of it, my first thinking was, I can understand why you would want Suzanne to come back, that would be helpful, but Suzanne's been there a little while, and I would, I almost was thinking that probably the next person wouldn't be as high of a pay grade, or, I mean, not grade, but as high of pay as Suzanne necessarily, so that way, you're paying that person less, but you're paying a little bit to Suzanne.
Yeah.
Possibly, it's gonna depend on the outcome of the hiring process.
Yeah.
So it's speculative right now, we just don't know. So what we do know is that we have personnel transitions, I think that's--
That's kind of my point, is we're gonna have some transitions, you know, that we might have to have some extra money for. So just to kind of keep that out there when we're thinking about the budget, I guess.
Yeah, so are you looking to add this to the next year's budget when we're putting, doing the line items?
This would be the 2020, this would be a modification to the budget to be approved at the special town meeting.
I'll be able to do a modification, 'cause a lot of times what happens is we get those, when unexpected things come up, they ask for, to take out of the money out of the finance. when unexpected things come up, they ask for, to take out of the money out of the finance reserve.
I'd like to see it stay as a buffer and use that rather than spend it.
Is there a reserve?
We have a reserve for when unexpected items.
Yeah, but it's 50,000, right?
Right. You're looking for a lot more? I mean, what is it that you're looking for?
We don't know.
We don't know. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I would think maybe we do want to take that reserve and just put a little bit more cushion in there so we have it, you know, because we, we can expect these fees or, you know, salaries, however you want to say, but we, we might have something else we're not expecting that we might normally use that money for. Just my opinion. I mean, we have a whole board.
If we were to double or triple that reserve, if we were able to, and then just leave it as a reserve rather than, you know, designate it for council on aging, then-
Yeah, yeah.
Then at least if we need it, we need it. If we don't, then we can, you know, we can just keep that buffer rather than spend it or, you know, people have that.
Well, I would, I would think it might be just a temporary, maybe something, because we haven't been spending it every year.
Yeah, no, we have.
Right? So I don't necessarily think down the road we need to increase it, um, on a permanent basis.
No, no, not, not permanent, just for the transition.
Just for the transition.
I feel like we have a lot of transitions in the next-
Well, I've said for a long time, if you think about the reserve fund as a percentage of your budget and think about that as your safety cushion, that's a very thin cushion. A $21 million budget and you have $50,000 as your buffer.
But we do have the stabilization.
You do have that.
You don't want to touch, but that is for emergencies.
I'm still saying my, I'm saying my annual thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So let's just walk through the pros and cons, though, just again, and I'm not advocating, I'm just, just saying. If, in the past, there have been times where we adjusted line items at the fall town meeting because we had, we had a note, like we, we already knew that something was going to fall short and there was a plan for it and those monies were going to be expended. So if, remember, anything that goes into the finance committee reserve fund is at the discretion, sole discretion, really, of the finance committee to release those funds. So depending on what the nature of the item is, we can just, you know, we want to make sure, I mean, I would argue if some of these things, if they're personnel related, we don't want a situation where we make a personnel plan and then, you guys are all very reasonable, I'm sure that we would win you over and you would see just the, but I mean, you could have a situation where the finance committee and the select board were actually at odds on something like that. So I think we just want to be, be careful on that.
And do we, we have a select board item for reserve or, do we have a select board item in there?
Yeah, small.
The small.
So we could always do it there if we wanted to.
Yeah, we could split it or something.
Yeah. Okay, well, just something to bring up as possibility, that's all. Um, so the special town meeting warrant, uh, you know, we're running a little late here, so I don't know if we just want to close the warrant right now. If anybody has anything they want to bring up specifically, I was actually going to wait until the end of the meeting to close the warrant because of something that was on there. And I forget what it was right now.
I've got one question on there.
Go ahead.
Since Chris is here. Megan's way, Chris, is that, is that all up to where it needs to be to, for the town to accept it or is there still some issues there?
Um.
I mean, I don't think I have a spot, sorry.
I remember boy.
Moody Bridge?
Last time we checked, Mr. Chairman, the, I guess we, was it updated before we recommended town access? Something has not been done, nobody has a precedent.
So this goes to the planning board first, so.
So, I guess, my question or concern is, we want to have that on the, on the warrant at this point if the roads are, are not up to the DPW and the town standards to accept. It's kind of sounds like we're jumping.
Well, do they, what we've done in the past, and it's been road specific, there've been times where they were kind of close and, and the DPW director thought that within a certain amount of time, well, in advance of town meeting, that it would be done. But if there's a lot of work and they're not in communication, I see what you're saying.
Does it, is it-
Is that a bad?
No, I was going to say, is this, are the issues there something that you think can be resolved in the next month or so or are they larger scale than that?
It can resolve in the next month or so, depending on the, the current owner of the road, how he or she wants to resolve it. So the last time that it came to my attention, um, was almost coming before the board when I got to know. We, at that time, we felt that the road was not in, in a position where the town should accept it. Now, since then, I don't know if work has been done, if it hasn't been, I'd love to take a look. If the board allows me, I could do that tomorrow.
We could leave it on. We can always pull it.
Yeah, all right, because I just don't, don't want it to make it the town meeting floor. It's not ready.
We have up until the day of town meeting to actually pull it off of there, so.
And the reason I wanted to keep it open until the end of the meeting was because we were going to be discussing North Hadley Village Hall at this meeting and I didn't know if we'd want to put anything on the warrant regarding that before we closed it. So instead of closing it, opening it and closing it again, we could just keep it open until the end of the meeting, but please remind me if we get to the end of the meeting, we haven't voted on it, unless there are any other comments or any other comments from you guys.
Joyce, I made sure last meeting last week, we waited for your opinion on this.
Oh, you know, you didn't need to. We're not getting into it yet, yeah. Alan, you had a question?
Are the CPA articles for the cemetery on the warrant or do we have to-
They're on there, yeah.
They're on it?
Yep, yep. There are a few of them.
Just, three, three of them.
Three, yeah.
And I believe the ones for the Golden Port will be coming up.
Oh, coming up, okay.
They'll probably be for the spring.
Okay.
Just, they're going to be coming up because-
Okay, yeah, just let us know.
What's CPA going to do with Golden Port?
I haven't heard.
Windows. They want to replace the windows.
Windows.
Yeah, they have to add windows.
Okay. Okay.
Article three, this was supposedly paired with the reduction in CPA, so I hope liberty of guessing that you would want to see this come up.
Make a motion to remove Article three.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
And the last thing we had here was our financial plans and projections. And we have a long-range financial report. That's, uh, this guy, not this one, this one right here. I don't know if you guys got a copy of that. That, I think it still needs to be updated, but-
Yeah.
1217, 2018. And then the budget projection for five years, so that's that other guy that was up front there. And this, this one was put together for the S and P Global Review. David, I don't know if you have any comments on that or things you want to draw to our attention?
So the budget projection for five years is something that, as you said, we prepared for S and P, uh, Global. It shows a couple of years where we're in surplus, but then years three, four and five shows that we have shortfalls. This is usual when you're looking at a five-year projection because you use conservative estimates in terms of your revenue and you use conservative ideas about your expenses, so your expenses are high, your revenues are low, and there's reading in two or three years. But it helps to get there from here because you can make assumptions about high-cost issues such as healthcare, insurance, um, you can plug in your own PEP plan, you can look at projected costs for large ticket items such as school and get a sense of how you can shape the budget in order to achieve balanced budgets going forward. I did update it for the most recent, uh, numbers and it shows the $77,000 surplus in FY 2020. The other document is the Long Range Financial Trend Analysis. This, I think, is, um, a document that I find very useful when making recommendations about the budget or thinking about the budget or putting the budget book together because it gives us a longer-than-budgetary cycle rhythm for your finances, whether they be revenues, whether they be expenses, whether they be debt management, whether they be looking at the enterprise fund or the general fund. Lots of different ways of looking at revenues, revenues adjusted for inflation, revenues from intergovernmental sources, one-time revenue, elastic revenue. And it gives you a sense of how does this perform over a multi-year period so that you can see strengths and weaknesses in the budget which may not be apparent if you just look at the budget from, as a year-to-year exercise. We've been doing this since 2005. We have been able to backdate some of these as far back as 2003. Every year I add a couple of new ways of looking at it. We updated it in October and that becomes the backbone for a lot of what I talk about, about the next budget coming up.
Anything else you guys have?
No.
Okay.
Okay, this is the smallest amount with red ink that I think I've ever seen. It's pretty good.
Yeah. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much for coming. Good night. Real quick, we could do our consent agenda. We have a few warrants. WP 1958S, AP 2009S-3, AP 2009S-2, AP 2009S, WP 1958, AP 1935 Reissue 2, AP 2010V. And then we have a sewer impact fee agreement, the village laundromat. And that is everything we have on our consent agenda tonight. I can have a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Can I pull out the impact agreement just to add a couple of questions?
Sure.
Okay, one second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Okay, David?
So for the impact agreement, I just wanted to know if there's a way that we could add something in there that states if the tenant were to fail to pay this impact fee, that the landlord would be responsible for it. And the reason I say that is we ran into this in the past where there was a dispute between the town and a tenant versus, you know, who was ultimately responsible.
Town and landlord, yeah.
Yeah. And the landlord didn't want to pay it because they said it was the responsibility of the tenant. Tenant didn't want to pay it because they said it's landlords, so, um, I have no problem with the agreement itself. I'm just concerned that if they don't, if it were to fall apart, that we might not get our money.
Question is, would there be a sewer impact fee if this business hadn't come in there?
And if they, if they're only open till, let's say, six months or something like that, I, I hope they're open longer than that, but, um, you know-
No, at 12 months, it's written in there that you're going to have a review on, on the impact fee itself.
But what I was going to say is they would only make two payments on this and usually the sewer impact fee is when you start the business.
In advance.
So would there be anything due if they stopped doing business there after six months or something? I'm just throwing out a number.
Right. Well, yeah, the, the impact is based upon their business impacting the sewer, so should they go out of the business, they would be, they would always pull them out.
Yeah, but my only concern with that is typically when you give someone an occupancy permit for a business like this, their fees are due in advance before giving them an occupancy permit.
Yeah.
In this case, we're giving them the occupancy permit ahead of time for signing this agreement. And so let's just say they did go out of business in six months, then we're going to be at that impact fee.
All right. I have no trouble adding the landlord, that's not a problem. Yeah, and we've done it in the past, too, and it even reverted back to the bank in one instance that I can remember. Um, well, yeah, and then we resolved the one between the landlord and the tenant.
Took a while, but yeah.
I mean, the only thing is if they do go out of business, you could argue their impact on the sewer is no longer there. So, I mean, that would be my argument if I was there.
But then at the same time, if someone's paying their impact fees in advance-
Yeah.
Like they're supposed to-
Yeah.
They can't come back and say refund.
We need to credit us. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a trick.
Maybe I ought to look at those other two agreements and how they worked out and work up for that.
So I don't have, I don't have a problem with the payment schedule. Everything else looks fine. It's just, I just would like to see someone else sign.
Make a motion that we prove subject to adding the landlord as a backup.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstate.
Hi.
7:15, public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, the 7:15 hearing, public hearing, change of office directors, Whole Foods. Is someone here from Whole Foods?
No one is here from Whole Foods. Uh, this is their change of corporate officers. They're, um, the chief financial officer for Amazon and the chief general counselor being added. Albert Percival, who was the director, is now going to be the acting secretary and he's actually the deputy general counsel. And they did not send anybody because typically for this, for officers changed is not something that really, y'all usually have to hold a lot of questions for typically.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Thank you.
It's almost 7:20.
Yeah, well, can wait a few minutes. Let's see. Do we think the Moody Bridge flat grant repurposing is going to take very long? Is that pretty simple? So we could move on to Moody Bridge Road flat grant repurposing. Chris, I believe you're here to discuss the scope of work for the paving supplied under federal lands accessibility program for Moody Bridge Road.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the, um, the wildlife refuge will, um, urging the town to see if we can make a request or urge them to make a request on behalf of the town to federal highway administration. See if the flat grant, if the federal highway administration can allow us to use it to pave Moody Road from the road to the entrance to the wildlife. So, uh, they approached me, also I also spoke to the administrator and I told them that that would be something that the board would need to authorize me to do before, so that's why it's before the board. They also requested if we can allow them to put a gate. Currently, we have Jersey barriers blocking. They prefer if we can allow them to put a gate because oftentimes they do go beyond the Jersey barrier to-
This would be, uh, I'm sorry, I forget who, the Silvio Conti-
Yes, Silvio.
Fish and Wildlife would be putting, would be paying for and putting in the gate.
Yes.
Okay.
And that doesn't interrupt with any DPW work at all?
No. They would, they also would give us a key just in case we need to.
Okay.
No water lines or anything else on there?
How about all landlords that can't get through there right now?
To their front property?
Yeah. That pipe should have been in the ground six months ago already now, eight months ago. There's no reason why we can't declare that an emergency and do exactly like they did over by Parsons on Mill Valley Road. Put a double barrel, two four-foot pipes in and get it over with and fix the road.
Chris, have you had complaints-
This is ridiculous.
From landlords who can't access the property? I thought that was all Silvio Conti land.
They, yes, it's their land, but the Moody, Moody, Moody Bridge Road is the town road.
Oh, you mean to get through there?
So, but, but because the flat grant is not being used at this time, so they are basically trying to see if we are allowing to speak on behalf of the town to lobby federal highway administration to use the money to pay- to lobby federal highway administration to use the money to pay.
The other part of Moody Bridge. Yeah, that's in disrepair. Yeah, and the residents on that end are very much in favor of this, from what I understand, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve just with the addition that we ensure that DPW, police, fire, Action EMS, and everybody else that needs a key to get down, to get down there for emergency purposes has one, not just Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstate.
And that covers the black cotton. Is that a motion?
Oh, yes, to be clear for both motions.
In the case.
Okay. Now we have a public hearing, change of manager at 110 Grill. Is anyone here from 110 Grill?
That's me, Joe Malinowski.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
When you opening?
As soon as I hire a couple more people.
Oh, yeah, you're that close?
Well, yeah, our building's ready. October 3rd, hopefully when we are opening day.
Okay.
Training before that. We have orientation on the 20th, training the week of the 23rd to the 28th. Friends and family on the first. We have a big party on the second, and then the third will be opening at 4 o'clock.
Great.
Yeah.
And you're taking over from, I think the gentleman that was the manager, was setting up the whole restaurant, now?
I believe it was Patrick.
Yeah, he's the regional manager.
Patrick's my regional area director. I've worked with Patrick for 25 years. I've taken over this location. I opened the one in Holyoke this past year on Christmas time. Bad, bad time, no. Or good time.
Yeah.
Very hectic. It's doing very well. And I live in Montague, grew up in Hatfield, originally from Amherst, but.
I was going to say that last name has to be local.
Yeah, I'm closer to home now, so I'm happy to be here.
Nice, nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Waiting for you to open.
All right.
Good luck for the year.
Good luck, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. All right, enjoy your night.
Yeah, thank you. So everyone is here. We can, even though it's not necessarily on our agenda, but we could do a library, senior center, and fire substation updates. I don't know if you guys want to start the library. Library folks are here, so you guys want to start?
So the library brought to my attention a concern about work that was done on the sidewalk in the water system that was associated with this project. There was a number of invoices that came my way from DPW. I forwarded them onto the library. Library came to me and said, these are not necessarily our expenses. So we're in the process of going through all the documentary information in order to find out what happened. Clearly, some sort of miscommunication or misunderstanding occurred. I'm not sure why this wasn't handled as a change order for the project since it did involve the general contractor. So a couple more days I need in order to put things together and then we'll work on making this project go forward and the bills paid in a timely manner.
So can you explain what will happen in the next few days, like what the process will be going forward with the bill? Because, I mean, it wasn't brought to our attention. It's not a change order because there was no change order submitted. So what will happen? Tell us what, how will this play out in the next few days?
Let me talk about the process. Okay, so these projects have a process that processes any change in the scope of work. By contract should result in a change order, which is reviewed and thought through and planned for.
We know that. We agreed to that at the beginning.
Right, so that didn't happen in this case. I don't know why. So I need to find out, A, what went wrong with the process?
So we did not approve that work. The library board, we did not approve that work at all. It never came to us. It was not approved by the trustees or the building committee. I'm just being clear about that. I want that known here, that we did not, were not, that work was not brought in front of us. It was not asked to go out today. So we actually don't have much to do with the bill.
Well, that remains to be seen, isn't it? It's something that we need to find the facts. We need to find out what the process was. We need to make sure that this project continues to move forward and that the bills are paid. I don't know who's going to end up paying them at the end of the day. I think that I just need a little bit more time in order to sort this out.
So will it be discussed at this meeting next? Where will it be discussed again? So that the library trustees can be there to discuss it. Will it be at a select board meeting? What are the next steps?
The next step, as I said, is that I have to do the investigation in order to get the facts. Those facts will lead me to the process by which we move this project forward and get the bills paid. I can't tell you exactly what it's going to be. Very likely it will come back to the select board. And I'd certainly be working hand in glove with Patrick and with Chris Okafor, and we'll get this sorted out.
I'd recommend, too, that the project OPM, I'd like to hear from him a little bit if this work is.
Thank you.
We have a.
Okay, yeah, so can you just explain, I mean, maybe we don't need to explain right now, but I would like to hear, you know, how this might have happened if, you know, work was done, paying an OPM to oversee work on the site. We should be alerted of change orders if they're happening on the site. And like I said, we don't have to get into it right now. I'll let David pursue the investigation because there's probably more to it than I know of, but just my comment right now, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah.
May I, do I have permission to speak?
Sure, yeah, you can speak.
My name's Carl Ferguson. I'm with DA Sullivan, and I'm currently serving as the clerk of the works for the library project. And I was, I was asked to come this evening just to essentially offer some input on what the current condition of the project was. And essentially what I'm referencing this evening is something that I believe all of you already had copies of. And it's my daily job report, which was dated August 7th. And it explained the events that transpired just prior to the approval or the understanding of the work. And I'm also referencing emails dated August 7th that I had written after my discussion with Dan Soucy, who is the superintendent for Orlando Manuli. So my conversation was with him. The information I gathered, I immediately reported to Mark Sullivan. He then immediately reported to Phil O'Brien, the project architect, who then proceeded to get emails to various individuals. I know Chris was sent an email. Just to try to get some clarification on the process, how it would proceed. And my understanding from speaking with Dan Soucy was that he had a meeting with Chris that afternoon, and there was a discussion about the work that was going to proceed, and they wanted to proceed with the work in that fashion. So all that is written in these pieces of information that you folks, I believe, already have. So that's essentially where I am at this point. If I can answer any specific questions, I'd be glad to. I know that there's been a discussion about further investigation. So all I'm referencing here tonight is the fact that this is the information that I proceeded, that I wrote and have submitted on August 7th.
Do you mind giving it to David just so we know he has a copy of it instead of?
Absolutely. Certainly.
So what exactly did happen?
And you want, what are you saying? You didn't get any of this information or?
So what happened was there, we received two invoices from one of the contractors. And it had to do with the water line. And so I think that, like many of the things in town, there was some discovery that what perhaps we thought was there wasn't exactly the way it was configured. The DPW got involved appropriately to take a look at it. And then working with folks on site determined what they thought was the best course of action in order to rectify that situation. In the course of that, and I'm keeping it really simple, in the course of that, it seems that there was a communication handoff issue. So what we're left with right now is a situation where we have invoices and there's not a lot of clarity until David finishes what he's doing or a recommendation on the table. But there's not a lot of clarity over who really is responsible for those invoices. Is it all on the library project? Is it all on the town vis a vis the DPW? Or is it perhaps something a little bit in between? So that's why David's saying it's complicated enough that he wants to have more conversations before we bring it back to kind of resolve it. And it may be something that David's able to handily resolve with some cunning stratagem, I don't know. But rather than get everybody in a whirl about it without all of the facts in front of us, I think David's taking an appropriate course.
Okay.
Because this just came out yesterday, right, that invoices?
Yeah.
Hi.
Okay.
We received them before yesterday.
It's recent and it's a holiday weekend, right?
I know, I'm just being clear.
Okay, it's been very recent, so.
Like I say, the first time the select board or anybody from the select board saw it was yesterday. That's what I was referencing.
I didn't know anything about it, so.
Right.
Can I just, and that's been for the trustees, but from my perspective, the library has a contract to do, it was included tying into the water main for water beds. And we're covering that. When they went to tie in, some people, I don't know who it was, DPW had a look at it and said, oh, this is, whatever's down there doesn't look right. We need to fix that. Well, that's, that's the town's water service. It's not the library's. I mean, eventually it is, but that particular hydrant in the service which serves more than the library, there's a problem with it. And fine, it should be fixed. We'll fall for that. But it strikes me as being, that's, that's a town issue. You discovered a problem in the street or in the sidewalk, and you directed our people to fix it. But, and my understanding was it was the DPW was going to take care of those costs. Now, I mean, maybe some things were kind of jumbled and some of the steps were taken. But I mean, the bottom line is, this is never a part of the library's responsibility. I don't think it is or should be. It's a town responsibility.
I would argue that we have an OPM that's supposed to process change orders and identify changes on the site and flag these issues and come to the board with those changes. So if there are changes occurring, we shouldn't be willy-nilly changing them. We have the OPM to do it.
We were directed by the DPW director.
Yes.
And so that's why I feel like there still needs to be an investigation because maybe there was some confusion there that it needs to go over. And maybe we shouldn't dive too deep into it right now because we're all presuming a lot of things.
So we're not here in a court setting. We're just giving an update as to momentary confusion. We'll sort it out. We'll have some concrete ideas about how to move forward. It is not our place right now to speak without facts.
And what I will, you know, again, it helps people, we did agree on and vote upon a change order process. I think if nothing else, this recent event has underscored the need for everybody to be fully familiar with that change order process. And I'm very comfortable going forward that people will be hyper vigilant to that. But in the mean, and then we'll deal with the other issue as we may over the next few days.
Can I make one related request from the OPM aspect of things? If there's any way to improve communication with the DPW and other town departments that may be somehow involved in the project, it would be appreciated. I know that emails are sent out to some individuals at the DPW on a daily basis about what's happening, but it seems like not everybody's getting those at DPW. That should. So if we can just kind of tighten that up a little bit, maybe talk to Chris and see who should be on that distribution.
Can I say something about that? I think that, and I think Molly pointed this out to us, it, for some reason through town email, it goes in people's trash bins. Is that what she said? It was their spam mail?
Spam.
Spam, maybe. So we are sending them to a lot of people who don't seem to be receiving them. And we kind of ran up with that, I think with Christian. Where I was like, oh, he's on the list, but then I think it's going to his spam mail. So there must be something in the town.
Yeah, it's catching it in the filter. Right.
And I just want to say that on behalf of the OPM, he does a daily report. It goes out, I thought it goes out to everybody.
It does. It's just, I think there's a problem with it.
It's damn good, okay? It's one of the best, most thorough reports I've ever seen of projects like this.
All I'm saying is, and maybe I'm on the list, but I haven't seen a single one since any of the projects started. Not that I need to, but I'm just saying if it, it's not obviously going out to everybody. And I'm just telling you from what I'm being told, it's not making it to the.
If everybody who has a town email account will check in your spam folder, it says Raken, R-A-K-E-N. Go in there, click on it, move it to your inbox, and from then on it will recognize it.
Mine goes in every day now.
Yeah, it'll come in. And we have to keep the filters on, I'm sorry.
I don't see it in my spam folder either, but I might.
I'm not on it, but I have, it's not in the town email because I have been checking it. But it's coming, it's coming to my own personal email. And I've been getting everything from you people, from the OPMs, everything.
So how about anybody who isn't getting it, who wants to get it? To make it easy, could we just have? Let Jennifer know and then Jennifer can communicate to.
I can do that.
And don't take that as a dig against you. I'm just trying to fix the problem. That's all it is.
It looks like a little bit of a lack of communication on our part here. And I just realized it now myself. Because I've been getting it all right along, so.
Well, I'm happy to get that information.
Okay, we'll get that fixed and then we'll move on to the important stuff.
Okay, any other updates on the library side? You guys look like the hooker school is halfway down.
Yeah.
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 Anything else? Fire substation, any updates there? Was there a change order?
I didn't get a change order yet.
Something for the water, tie in there?
Change order, upgrade insulation with the fire substation project owns?
Where'd you get that?
From Phil.
I didn't get into my email today. I know they probably had a meeting this morning.
Yeah, it was only a minimal one. Off the insulation in the road anyway, wasn't it?
It's radiant heat, rigid insulation.
We've laid the groundwork for the radiant heat. I have a meeting next Tuesday night, so with the finance, I'm on the finance part of it.
Okay.
From 5:00 to 5:30, so that would come to me then.
Okay.
But they're, they're moving along.
And then on the senior center, I mean, it's really moving along over there. It's crazy.
Those framers are like.
Go ahead, yeah.
Crazy people. And I don't know if you've all seen, but Hadley Media put out a time lapse from their camera today. It was really fun. And it's, go to Hadley Media and they have a YouTube address. It's up until September 2nd. It goes from, the foundation's there, but it goes from there, from two minutes to the whole thing. So it is, which is great. And we do continue to find things underground that are unexpected and unanticipated, which brings up the request.
Yeah, I was going to bring up a change. I don't have the official change order, but I know, so when we were excavating out there, found a retired septic system, I guess. So there are things on the ground out there. They are asking for, requesting a $7,500 change order in order.
Up to.
Up to $7,500 change order to remove that and then backfill.
Well, if you had a house out there, there had to be a septic system.
Yeah, yeah.
It's on the other side of the field, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, then we know.
So I look for a motion for that change order.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I think that was everything on there. On the senior center front, it's Suzanne's last day tomorrow. So we wish her well and we'll miss her here. Anything else on that? Let's get back to our agenda. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you all. Oh, yeah.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
Did we have that? Was that in an email?
Yeah, so John.
Or did you have that printed out, David?
Yeah, I gave you the copy of that.
Did you give me that copy? Did you give me that copy? Oh, great. Hold on, sorry. Put it in one of these. Oh, yeah. So we have a recommendation to hire Mr. Kim Keegan as the backup driver for the Council on Aging ban. He lives in Sunderland. He has driven a twenty-eight passenger bus for Thayer Care from two thousand eleven to two thousand seventeen. Worked as a PVTA driver, dispatcher for the town of Amherst in the late eighties, early nineties.
He's not related to the Select Board member?
He is not related, no, no conflict of interest.
Make a motion to accept Mr. Keegan's. And he will go through the query check, correct?
He's already been.
He's already been. Okay, just questioning.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 How often is that, every two years on the query? There's a time limit on it. I just read that somewhere.
Yeah, something like that.
I think it's every two years.
I missed out on public comments. I don't know if anyone is here for public comment. I'm sorry about that.
Oh, that's fine.
I'm sorry.
I have two comments, so, but one, of course, is on the North Hadley Hall, so I'll wait to discuss that because you're going to discuss.
Yeah, that's coming up.
So the other one was on Sartica Park. I just want to thank you all for doing the mowing or whoever was responsible for it. I was so stressed about that place, kind of, did you see it? It was kind of getting overgrown, over the top. Yeah, and I thought, the kids are going to be coming back to school. Parents finding their way through the backways to get there. And I just didn't think it looked very pretty at all. So I don't know who was responsible, but going forward, we spent so much money on the park. I'm wondering, is there a plan in place to make it keep looking nice?
So Chris deserves the credit for getting the contract.
Thank you, Chris, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Chris and I are working on a maintenance plan.
Oh, you are? I would be grateful for that, that would be nice.
And from that, the DPW, I believe, is going to be responsible for mowing. My understanding, I don't know.
Let's have a conversation about.
We know, okay, we're not quite there yet. We were talking about budget earlier, that should have come up.
But I can tell you that it won't be overgrown again.
It won't be?
At least for the rest of this year. We're going to take it care of, at least for now.
Because we don't need kids running around in the high grass with ticks and mosquitoes and everything else around. I think we should at least maintain it.
There are also seniors who really like to walk there, and they were very upset when it wasn't maintained.
Well, you know how things go. Things get built and.
And we never maintain them.
That's right. Hopefully that'll change.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Jane?
Public comment?
Yeah, public comment.
Kudos to the DPW for painting all those posts around town.
I didn't even know we had all of those until they got painted.
It looks so nice. I mean, some of them really look awful, but they still look better when they're painted.
They're only probably half done, believe it or not.
Great, that's so nice. Really makes a difference.
Thank you.
As long as we pass on praise, I'll add mine to the DPW as the Cemetery Committee Chairman. You know, we transitioned into the new regime. We are DPW's basically running the show, and we have new mowing contractors now. And we're doing our own burials. As far as, from my perspective, everything's working great. Really smooth. And the cemeteries look good. And nobody's calling me up complaining. And they're just looking for information on their ancestors, which is, that's, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, this is a long time in coming, and Marlo worked on it hard with me, and so far, so far, so good.
Great.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all set. Move on to the new business, our SWAT analysis.
One of these people is here for a little.
Oh, you want to do that real quick? You just want to dive right in there? Okay.
Let's dive.
Okay. Joyce is requesting North Hadley Village Hall, so.
So they don't have to listen to all that Moon Day thing about the SWATs.
Come on. I was trying to keep you awake.
Hate to tell you how I feel about the SWAT analysis, but anyway.
Okay, so the Select Board is reviewing the proposals for the sale of North Hadley Village Hall. We decided last week to hold off on making any kind of decisions until this, this week. I also wanted to keep the special town meeting warrant open in case we wanted to put anything on the warrant regarding our decision to to the village hall. So Joyce, you weren't here last week. I don't know what your feelings are.
Oh, you don't need to know really my feelings, but you know what I prefer to do with the building, but everybody voted to put it out for bid. I think that both bidders are under the assumption of the ball field came with it, except for historic renovations and rental properties. They wanted to lease the ball field. But I think that that wasn't included, and I think that, are you Peter back there? Were you under the assumption that the ball field was within the property also?
No, I wasn't under the assumption. I was told that it wasn't part of it, but I didn't see anything happening with the building without the playing field being a part of it.
Anybody else have any feelings over the week?
So can I ask you if the ball field can't happen based on the town meeting vote? At least that's my perspective. I don't know about the rest of the Select Board. So are you still interested in the project? And are you still interested in keeping your bid in there if the ball field can't happen?
I don't see that there's enough space. I mean, even if I was to live there, you have zero green spaces. You're living on an asphalt world. So there is, there is no outside living space whatsoever. That's not asphalt. That comes with the building.
Ma'am, you were here, you wanted to say something about North Hadley?
So I'm Martha Boyesford. I live in North Hadley. And I've lived in North Hadley all my life. Not that that gives me any more clout about what to do about the building. I just wanted you to know, I love North Hadley. I love the village halls. I went to church there as a kid. My older siblings went to school there. I spent years in ORH there, never mind the library that I went to or my siblings went to, my kids went to. However, it will never again be a church or a library or a place for kids. I think, and I think for me, it would be more heartbreaking to see it used as apartments or whatever than it would be to take it down and, and just look at the pond, look at the North Hadley Pond. I can't believe that the town really doing need the seventy thousand or a hundred thousand that it would bring. At the very least, what I'm asking you is, please don't change that family's will for the ball field. They had, they gave it to the town for a specific person, for a specific purpose, and I would hate to see that changed in any way.
The town meeting took care of that.
Yeah, I don't think we have a choice there.
So as a person who lives in North Hadley, I would just say, take it down. And let's look at the pond. The pond doesn't look so pretty now, but you know, it has seasons and it's beautiful. It could be a great vista. Once Leand is gone, it's gone. It's done. That's my comment.
Could I offer a point of comment?
Go ahead, Alan.
I mean, I think, first of all, there's no point in going back to town meeting, even if the proposals are solid. We'd have to go back to town meeting if you like the proposals for any reason or if there was any possibility of going forward. We would have to go back to town meeting and have that vote retaken because in order to remove chapter ninety-seven, it doesn't mean that you don't get open space necessarily. You could still have part of the field that's not used for parking for open space. That's under one proposal, the one that requires parking. Mr. Aronis?
Yes.
As I had said, his proposal, he is not talking about building a parking lot on the ball field, but using it for lawn parking for the music venue that he's proposing.
Essentially, essentially, the field would only be used maybe twelve or fourteen times a year for lawn parking. That's it. Other than that, it would be, it would look exactly the same.
Yes, and that paving is, would be using it. Similar to the way the church uses it for their events, which is fine. I think it's a great kind of multi-use there. They use it as needed, they don't wreck it, and it's theirs, open space. The thing about taking the building down to make open space is, yeah, we would get open space, but we have to spend seventy thousand dollars, sixty to ninety thousand dollars to knock the building down. That building, that part of the property that the building is on doesn't have frontage on the pond because it's an apartment. So you might get more open space, but it's not waterfront space. And then we'd have to, you know, you're not going to just leave it, leave it look like a bunch of rubble. You have to, we'd have to, you know, do something with it to make it look presentable. That's more money. And we do lose the building. And we do lose any possibility of gaining any kind of tax revenue from reusing it. So I mean, I don't think it's an easy choice. Or maybe it is easy for you folks, because I know there's a feeling that, okay, we've been wrestling with this for years. Let's get it, let's get, put it behind us and move on. And I do respect that. I also want to commend the Select Board for at least trying, you know, a couple of times to get some things forward. On the other hand, it's like, if there's a couple of proposals and they have any possibility of going forward, understanding that you need town meeting, okay? I would like to see us explore it fully because this is one of five buildings in the town, historic buildings. We're losing one this week. There's a fifty-fifty chance that Russell, we won't be able to find a partner with that. And so we're losing, we're potentially losing most of our historic buildings. If there's any chance to keep them, we should at least make, be able to look ourselves in the mirror. At the end of the day, when the dust has settled, and we've gone the extra mile to make sure there's no other alternative, we don't make any snap judgments. I know, and I don't think this is a snap judgment. I mean, we've been trying to get this done for years. And one thing I can't understand is what happened to the last time? There was, there was a proposal, and I think one of the same, the same gentleman. It seemed to go nowhere. I never saw any final decisions on anything. Maybe there was some issues, but they weren't really, maybe they could have been solved. I don't know.
Well, I don't know about the past, but I don't, this time I think we're all intent on making a decision one way or another and dealing with this this year because we decided that we would.
I was going to suggest, and this voice from here has answered prior to it, is have you talked to the North Hadley people? I mean, I've talked to.
They were here, so.
I've talked to a few, I talked to the bidder, and he said, I don't know anything about these proposals. I don't care more. So I was thinking, if, you know, if there's any chance of going forward, I would say the first thing that would have to be done is have a meeting up there.
This has been on the agenda with them for fifteen years, Alan. We've been doing this for fifteen years.
Yeah, but.
We've had, we've had plenty of opportunities, and the restrictions that the Historical Society put on them to begin with was outrageous.
What Historical Society?
Historical Commission. So they, it wasn't a friendly lease that, or the sell point that they wanted to do for it. So that was one reason why it didn't ever go forward with that, with their restrictions.
So could David, could you lay out first what our options are right now?
Could I just, so if there is, I don't understand this article ninety-seven, I believe it is.
Yeah.
But if there is a way that the land could come with the building, I would be more than happy that it be stated in the deed that it would never be developed. And that it's still maintained open space. It could be put right in the deed that this cannot be developed. I need it for lawn parking. That's it. There is one little story building I want to talk in the backcourt.
Yeah, but we still have to go petition the legislature to take it out of article ninety-seven. So we'd have to go back to town meeting to do that.
If it's possible that it could happen, and the town would like to see this happen and have me restore the building and go forward with this, I'd be more than happy to do whatever it takes on my part to make sure that that land stays grass.
So can private land have article ninety-seven protection or just public land? Just public land, okay.
It could be open space with restrictions, but not by chapter ninety-seven.
Just for everybody's benefit, article ninety-seven refers to a clause within the Massachusetts Constitution. It basically says that if you put land, public land into park or active recreation use, it has to stay there for all of time unless you find compensatory land that is not under article ninety-seven and designated through the help of the Massachusetts Legislature to do that. That was what was presented to annual town meeting was an article to remove the, petition the legislature to remove the ninety-seven restriction on the ball field and place it on a larger part of land, which was not under article ninety-seven, but should be. And the voters didn't go for that.
Okay.
But, but, there was no, there was no specific proposal. The alternative was put more money into it as a town building or demolish it. Now you have a different choice. You have prioritized reuse and renovation or demolish it. It's different choices. And maybe, I don't know if the town meeting would ever go for it. And I wouldn't even recommend going back to town meeting unless the people in North Hadley were, you know, were okay with it. But it's a different, to me, it's slightly different because you have two specific renovation proposals on the table. We didn't have that when we went to town meeting last year. It was nothing, it was nothing. So just for what it's worth.
So what are our options right now?
Options are to go back to town meeting and ask for an article ninety-seven exclusion again. Petition the legislature for the removal of that with the information that we have two proposals in front of us. The other option is to reject the bids and rebid this. The other option is to reject the bids and demolish the building, which we would need to raise the money for. You can negotiate with the high bidder for an alternative to the offer that he's placed on the table. I think those are your options.
Renovate the building.
Renovate the building.
I think we're way past that.
That's that one.
No, my statement last week was, you know, at seventy thousand dollars, you can't buy a postage stamp in a town of Hadley right now, a piece of property with a ranch house on it for less than three hundred thousand dollars. And they're buying these houses and putting another hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollars into them for a small family to live in. And we've had appraisals on this building and this parcel of land by itself at two hundred and forty thousand dollars. You know, a hundred thousand dollars for just the property is reasonable, you know? And everything we've had coming in has been below it. I'm, I don't want to see it knocked down, quite honestly. I'd like to see it like they did on West Street with the old fire station and repurpose it and made a couple apartments out of it. And it's a nice little place over there on Common now. You know, I would like to see somebody take, take the incentive like this gentleman possibly and, and make it work and, and make it fit into the historical.
I would really like to see the building look nice again.
Yeah.
That's what I do.
So what I don't want to do is go back to town meeting and delay this because we're going to have ongoing maintenance costs for the furnace, roof issues, all kinds of other stuff that's going to be, we're going to.
And it's going to be abandoned in a matter of eight, ten months anyway now, so.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I say, we either reject.
I make a, I make a motion to, to sell it to the highest bidder. That way, it doesn't cost us anything, take it down.
With no parking or just that limited parking?
Yes, just the way it is.
Well, but I mean, that's, that's a question, I think.
I still would like to go back to town meeting. I do appreciate.
We can do that.
But I like, I like this gentleman's idea about approaching the legislature and at least allowing it to be used for open space and a deed on it saying, you know, not to be used for parking or whatever, that it would be something that would stay open. And if it's in our purview to put it into a deed, then I think we should do that also.
We've got sixty to ninety thousand dollars for rough estimate to take it down. And look at what we ran into over here with, with Hooker Square. And look at what we ran into over here with, with Hooker Square. Okay.
But is it like a conditional acceptance? Because it seem, seems like the gentleman's, you know, what you thought that you were bidding on, it's, I think you've got more clarity now.
No, he said at the beginning that he was aware it was only...
I was aware of that, and just like I think Joel was, because he came at a certain time, that's why you put an offering to lease the ball field. Honestly, I, I'd been driving by for two weeks and saw the sign, and didn't even realize that it was really for that building. And my friends here helped me put together this proposal quite quickly, and it's something I've been thinking about for a while. But the one thing is, the building's due. And I even went there as a child, and the fireworks were there in North Hadley, and the Polk Band used to play in the field, and it was a great time. So...
You don't want to mention fireworks.
But they, the fireworks aren't there anymore, but...
No. I love the fireworks up there. Didn't like the aftermath of it.
I think the building can shine again. And it fits into a few different ideas of what I've had for my idea of retirement, and, but the plan doesn't work without those twelve, fourteen days of parking. Just doesn't.
I mean, can you use Article 97 land for parking?
We're doing it now.
I mean, it's open space.
Wouldn't the town have to enter into a lease agreement?
Or would it just be like the town common, and you get a one-day permit, or however many days? Yeah, yeah, and then you can kind of...
Does the church get a permit every time they use it?
No.
So...
And we don't want to do anything to the church.
If we're just talking about something like that, how extreme is it?
My concern, whoever would buy it, is the planning board and the parking requirements.
Right, but we can't presume what another elected body will do.
We could warn these people.
Well, that's why I'm wondering if maybe there should be some time for discussion between...
Have I? Uh, in North Hadley, no.
No, I mean, okay. So you haven't done any of the, any projects like this before?
Not exactly like this, but I've done large projects, yeah.
Could, could we agree on anything tonight, or maybe, I don't know how to involve the planning board in the process, because I feel like they should be involved.
I don't have a definitive answer from you right now, I understand that this is a little bit confusing. Again, I said this earlier, if this is something that the town thinks they would like to see happen, and see someone else restore the building, get something that, go in there that people can come and enjoy, and the town starts to get tax revenue again, the field stays open space, if this is something that you guys think would be a good vision for you, then let's figure out what needs to happen to make it happen.
Do you feel like you need to...
It doesn't have to happen tonight.
Do you feel like you need to go before the planning board, before you actually know what you can...
I had some preliminary conversations with Tim about what might, may or may not be able to be used in the building, and he didn't seem to think that there would be any problems.
I would like, as far as using the parking on the ball field, if we were to work something out like that, I think it would have to be specified in an agreement, you know, a certain number of days per year not to exceed, and there would have to be some shared maintenance costs as well, because if you parked fifty cars in there and you end up tearing the field after, after a rainstorm, the BPW shouldn't have to be repairing it.
And I don't think it could be in a deed anyway.
Yeah. But at the same time, if we were to do something like that, the price on the property would have to be more than seventy thousand, because you, in essence, are getting the use of that ball field to some degree. So I still don't think that the seventy thousand dollar price covers both of those. But that, that's where I stand. So, otherwise, tear it down, leave the space open. And just for discussion, you know, we're already maintaining the common, and we're already maintaining that ball field, and it would be available for people in North Hadley to use if we kept it. So, I don't, I don't know, I could see both sides of that. I see like, yeah, that's true, there should be some shared maintenance, perhaps, but then again...
Some kind of ongoing negotiations, and maybe he'd be interested in maintaining it for fifty years or something.
Or something, yeah. Yeah, we could discuss what it could be.
Absolutely maintain it for...
Can I ask a question, it's a heck of a question, in relation to the parking, does the select board, can the select board, or can somebody in town issue like a license, a one-day license, like we do for liquor licenses, for parking, for that kind of parking, lawn parking?
We do for the common, that's what we were just saying.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, for the, so that comes from the select board?
Yeah.
You don't go to the planning boards or that, no?
No, no.
Yeah, so, I mean, so right now, I mean, I definitely, I feel like we're close. And, but I want to be, you know, as above board and fair as possible, and what I'm struggling with is, do we reject both bids and then give both bidders an opportunity to come back? Do we, I mean, right now, this is the high bidder, but I think, I mean, I'm agreeing with you, I don't think it's high enough. I mean, so, and then it seems like we still need a lot, some more clarity on the actual use, proposed use, because this is kind of a moving target for us. So what's the best way for us to do that?
Would it be helpful if we take this under advisement until the next time, in the interval, I talk to town council, and just say, okay, so what really are our options with an Article 97 property? Can we lease it for parking purposes?
Necessarily, at least just let them use it.
Yeah.
Because I think, I think the lease might be a little sticky point, like if we were to allow them to use town facilities or properties, just like we use the common, unless it's a lease property.
Common law, yes, of the property, okay.
The other thing...
Would that be helpful to the board if I did that?
Yeah, I think that would be good.
What about leasing the property to him for ninety-nine years?
You can't do that.
Like they did in that building.
No.
It's under that provision.
It's under protected...
Protective land.
No, I mean the building.
He's not gonna do the work on the building and lease it to us?
Do we still want to own it anymore?
I don't want it!
The other thing too is, now we do have two proposals with two suggested uses. Do we get an opinion from the planning board about the site and that use of any kind? I mean, they ultimately...
Well, we advertise the property as, as making no representation as to suitability for anything.
I have that, I know that, but I'm just saying is...
It tooks the buyer to...
Okay.
And that's, that's, we asked him a couple times, maybe he would be, it would be to his advantage and our advantage to go see the planning board with a couple different plans, and see the direction they're, they're going in.
It would really be worth hearing what they have to say, because they...
Listen to their opinion.
They're basically the, you know, that's a parallel board to our board, and they make decisions about planning, so if we sell that property to you, we have that authority, but we don't have the authority to say, yeah, five parking spots you have there are okay.
They may have to approve the re, the change of use, I think, right?
And they might have to do that as well.
They have fifteen minutes before their, start of their meetings that they...
It's like an open...
Open session.
A lot less hours?
Twice a month.
It's on Tuesdays in this room. So John could probably tell us what their hours are, because he has, he's here. Six thirty.
Six thirty, first, first and third Tuesdays.
So David, what's the, if we were to reject these bids and put it out there again, so they could come back with a new proposal that either doesn't take the ball field into account, or maybe after we talk to town council, maybe takes the use of the ball field into account, but not the sale? What's the shortest amount of time we could put this out there for a response?
Probably four weeks.
How many?
Four.
If you've got advertising requirements, that's, that's what's jamming you up. You've got advertising, central register, Conbi's, newspaper.
And this, and this approach would not even have to evolve going back to town?
No.
Let me, let me do this, while we're talking, I'll, I'll look up the posting requirements, the posting timeline for the, for property.
Because what I'm thinking is, if we know this is gonna take a while as far as getting a response, if we were to reject and make a motion to put it out there again tonight, David could be on this tomorrow, while he's talking to town council, give you guys a chance to respond, and get the information from what town council says, that we've already got the ball rolling on this and not waiting for two weeks, our next select board meeting, to then put it back out to bid, because I really want to see it gone one way or another before the end of the year, like we said, so...
You know, I'm there.
Yeah. But I'll let him look up and see what the timeline is.
So I'm getting, I'm getting the sense that there, there is no way possible that the land would be a guaranteed part of the parcel?
It might, not for sale probably, unless we can change that, that's why he's gonna talk with town meeting. At town meeting vote this past spring, the town meeting members voted no, not to sell the piece of property.
Not, not to take it out of Article 97, so that we could sell it. Yes, yeah. So there may be the ability to use it, depending on how we work it out, but not own it.
We could sell it under 97, they just wouldn't be able to use it, except for...
We couldn't sell it.
Why can't you sell it?
Because it's, it's, Article 97 is town-owned land.
You're stuck with it.
Yeah.
Right. And I think everybody's pretty clear, they want to keep the town green space.
Yeah.
All right, so it says the central register has got a publication date of nine eleven, so that would be two, the bids would be due two weeks after that, so that puts us at around end of September, September twenty-six, something like that.
That's our next meeting, the twenty-fifth, I believe. So, can I make a motion that we reject these two bids, and put this back out on September eleventh, or publish it on September eleventh, for the soonest closing date possible? And in the meantime, we talk to town council, and get some information for you on what we can do with the ball fields, to see if you're still interested in it. And I know I'd feel a lot better if you went to the planning board and talked to them about it before, with your...
Yeah, well, that stuff would all be on me.
Your proposal, yeah.
It'd make sense, I mean...
Just because then that would be like, hey, they're good with it? We're good with selling it?
You don't want to buy, I hate to say this on TV, but you hate to buy a piece of property you can't do anything with.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, we want to be fair to you too, so it's easier for you to speak with the planning board ahead of time. I don't want you to get stuck with this elephant up there, because you know, you don't know how I feel, but... I don't need to tell you, as you can tell from all the chuckles here, but anyway, being fair to you, I would...
But I think, I think that there isn't a way that the land could be attached in some kind of a permanent way that I won't be rebidding on the ground.
Well, I certainly want to have, have our town council direct us in that, so that it could be used for you also.
If you could use it as parking for events, is that enough?
There, there is a structure I need to put up in a corner of it, and...
Oh, okay. That carries, that's on the property line, or over the property line?
Right, and I know David, I mean, so I'm sorry, John seems to feel that the building has, right now, a very high value. To break the building up into usable parts, it's an extreme amount of money expense, all the wiring that's in there, it's void, it's all gonna come out, it's all gonna be separated, new heating system, just think about what the paint job's gonna...
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Roof. So, it's a very large undertaking, and I think to invest that kind of time, money, and energy into that size of a building, and to only have maybe ten parking places in the future, it's not fiscally responsible.
I agree.
You know, so, I mean, if you're gonna go through this whole process, no, I'm not saying that down the road the field would get developed, but it gives people the option to park on the ground. But to invest that kind of time, money, and energy into fixing this building up, and you only have, I mean, you can't even have a large dinner party. Right, I mean, you can't, there's not enough people to park.
There's, there's not even enough buffer, you couldn't even put a ladder on the roof, because you're given five feet from the edge of the building, in the scope of leaning a ladder, you'd literally be on the town land, if you were trying to paint the building or work on the roof.
Has that line been delineated definitively?
Yeah.
Is it what, five feet from the building?
It's five feet from the building.
Yeah, that's my good.
So, I mean, you can't, there, there actually isn't enough room to drive around the building on the land owned by the person who buys the building. So if you wanted to bring a vehicle to the backyard, you'd be trespassing either on the towns, and if the town puts up a fence five feet up, you can't even fix the roof.
Yeah, mopeds, mopeds only.
Well, it's, I mean, but if you're gonna de-led the building, you're setting up staging, you're literally on town land.
That being said, I, I feel like those, you know, I feel, still feel like, you know, with the option we're gonna take to town meeting is, we can sell it to someone like yourself, or we can tear it down. And is there anything we can do with taking a certain percentage of that land out of Article 97 to get around these issues? But I don't know if that's gonna be possible or not, so that's, that's up to the whole board, and, I mean, I appreciate all your feedback and those restrictions, because that's why we wanted to pull the land out of Article 97, so it was more...
I think that's what we ran into before, because we were willing to give or put into the RFP the fifty-foot sideline to it, so that it would give the building some parking, and still be able to maintain the open space. So that was our original thought when we did our first one, and that's why it had to be rejected, because of the, whatever that 97 is, 97, so that's why that did. But we were willing to give that amount of that property, so that it would go with that building.
Is it possible to take the 97 out of part of the property?
Well, then, we're gonna ask, I mean, we still have to go to town meeting, so...
Well, I think this is why we need to give David a chance to, so if we follow suit with his motion, reject them, plan on going back out, everybody can do more due diligence.
And then that brings us to putting an article on town meeting warrant for a spaceholder too, in case we need to go back and ask for...
It's on there anyway.
And give fifty feet of that property. Not give it, but you know what I mean, go to the building.
Just a point of information, I submitted the online application to the central register and kicked it back and said I have to have a deadline of October eleventh. So do, I don't know if that changes, changes your thinking.
It's over, it's okay.
Yeah, it's...
Sixteen, twenty-fourth? Sixteen, might be.
All right, I'm gonna submit it then.
So you want to vote on that? Did we, we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion on that particular point? If we, if you decide to rebid, one note of concern I have from other residents was, there'd be, how long is the building gonna sit in its current state? And I'm not asking for definitive timelines, I know it's dependent on a lot of things, but maybe you could say, you know, within a year, within two years, we plan on having the building looking like it should be, something along those lines, because that would help to alleviate a lot of the concerns from...
It'd be a lot sooner than the town is...
Oh, sure.
I could have as much time as you.
Won't take us fifteen years, right?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I'll be dead in fifteen years, and we'll be around to see it.
All those in favor of that particular motion?
Aye.
Aye. And do we wanna, I'd like to close the warrant for town meeting, so do we want to put anything on the town meeting warrant right now?
So we already have a placer for the North Hadley Hall?
Do I have one of those? Do we have a placeholder for North Hadley Hall in here?
We do now, yeah.
We do now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably better for the demolition anyway.
So we have one on there? Do we want to provide any guidance? Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your proposal.
Well, let's let him figure out what we need to put on there, but there's a spaceholder there.
We have a placeholder there for North Hadley Ridge Hall, TBD.
In regards to Article 97?
In regards to, who knows, what number of things? A placeholder, yeah.
All right.
Okay. So I guess just, we need a motion to close the warrant.
I'll make the motion to close the warrant.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have the SWAT analysis. My main point of this was, discussion-wise, how do we want to handle processing through this? You know, it's used primarily for budget discussions, looking at department needs. I don't think we have to have this done before special town meeting, but it would be good to, you know, get some clarity on this and see what we need for the coming, upcoming budget season. So, do we want to try to handle a couple departments at a time, and chip away at them? So do we want to try to handle a couple departments at a time and chip away at them? It could be good to have done by the all-boards meeting, which is October 24th?
No, November 13.
November? November 13?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Chief Spankinable had called me and said that he, because of being back on vacation and answering all his emails, he will have it submitted to us.
Okay.
Shortly.
Okay.
Suzanne notes that you don't have hers in there.
No, it's right here.
Okay, it wasn't on the list of the ones.
Seal away, right there.
Okay, good, perfect.
We got it. Yeah.
Still I did.
Maybe we could, we could group them to, you know, do all of town hall, public safety.
Okay.
I think we did that anyway.
I think so.
I think all we need is highlights because all they're doing is expanding on, I mean.
And some people did that. They just said this was an accomplishment.
And I want to highlight what they achieved over last time.
But let's not make this a long process.
Okay, I understand.
See what I mean? I mean, there's no sense in over-killing.
No, 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 it does not have to be a long process, yeah.
All right. That will help us prioritize with the budget system.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
So SWOT, we'll do it by department, town hall, public safety.
School. They can come in with public safety.
With public safety, yeah.
And then DPW.
Other.
Yeah.
She only got three meetings.
Okay, sounds great, thank you. What's next? I think town administrator report.
All right, there's not a lot that's changed from one week to the next. And we've talked on a number of issues that I had updates for, so just going to blast right through it. Unidirectional flushing, this project has started again. Flushing will commence on September 9 and continue for six to eight weeks. And the results will be used to inform the next capital improvement. And for water infrastructure.
Conversation. Let's look at that today.
Just running through here.
Yeah, after he's done.
All right, so we handled the borrowing. Yeah, it looks like we've covered everything that I had an update for already.
Okay, great, thank you. Do we have anything unforeseen?
Do. I would like to ask for the select board's authorization to engage in talks with neighboring towns regarding regionalization of water and sewer issues, drinking water supplies and wastewater treatment issues. Obviously, any agreement or anything like that would have to come back in front of the select board, but just to.
They might even have to go to town meeting.
Just to engage in some initial discussions.
Which way are we going? Are we doing them or are they doing us?
A little bit both, I think.
Will you be involving Kirsten these discussions too?
Yeah, we've had some initial talks and I think we're on the same page. And we're looking at all options that are out there to save the town money and kind of combine purchasing power.
My one question was on the SWOT analysis was where did regionalization come from? Whose is that? There was no name on that one.
Oh, that was submitted by the police.
Police and fire.
The regionalization? Because there was no.
Yeah, because I, I think I asked.
Sign off on that?
Both chiefs about that a couple of times.
Okay.
In an open meeting.
Well, yeah, I'm more than happy to have you have those conversations.
Well, I mean, you're looking at water sewer and the police and fire still have their mutually agreements with all these other towns. So, you know, maybe it's something that can work out in the future.
Actually, and now Action Ambulance has the contract with UMass for football at the stadium for five years.
I think it's good to look at our options and see what's out there as we're planning ahead and seeing where we want to go with, with our infrastructure here, so it'd be helpful. Do we need to vote on that or just say, yeah, sounds like a great idea? Let us know what happens.
Sure. Go for it then.
Okay. Anything else that's not, we didn't bring up?
No, I just need to know what dates you did last time. Because there's no minutes.
I can, I can give, I can pull it up.
No, I mean, I'm not, I'm not being critical, Jennifer, I just wasn't here. It's my fault. I just need to put it in the Bible here.
I can email them all to you tomorrow.
They'll be fine.
Yeah.
We were thinking about just calling you an hour before.
We could have FaceTime. It would've been okay.
We could have called them.
Yeah.
And then, any announcements?
Sit here with my cocktail.
I have one announcement. September 18, 4:00 p.m. at Esalon sponsoring a Girl Scout Tea Party for first and second grade girls to try to get them involved in Girl Scouting. So, first and second graders at 4:00 p.m. on the 18th at Esalon.
How about Fireman's Barbecue?
September 20th, Fireman's Barbecue. Tickets are on sale over at the Public Safety Complex. It's at the Young Men's Club and it starts at, what club?
Maybe, three, somewhere between three.
Late in the afternoon on Friday.
Tickets are $17 apiece or two for 30.
What was that there? Is it chicken or steak?
Chicken. Says chicken.
Sticks the week before, it's not for the firemen.
Oh, okay.
Chicken barbecue.
That's the other thing. Okay.
All set? Headed? Okay.
Oh, you want to do the calendar? Right, raffle calendar?
Oh, I didn't even know it is.
The fundraiser.
Sorry. Support the Hadley Council on Aging Calendar Raffle, 31 prizes. Tickets are $10 and there is a daily drawing all throughout October. You can get your tickets, I'm sure, at the Council on Aging.
In the collector's office?
In the collector's office here in town hall? Anywhere else?
Library.